Good morning, welcome guests. If you would please silence your devices so that we don't have any distractions during our work session today. As always, we'll begin with a word of prayer. By with me. Father, we're incredibly grateful for the many blessings that you have given us today, Lord. The blessings of children. And we pray for every child in the state of Alabama this morning, whether they're in a classroom, Lord, or in their homes, or in a church, wherever they are. We pray your hand and your provision upon them. And please make us the very best leaders and stewards of all that you have given us. In Christ's name we pray. Amen. All right. As we get started this morning, Dr. Mackey, can you?
Yes. If we could have Ms. Fisher come up.
Yes.
Elizabeth Fisher, our employee of the quarter. This is her resolution, just so you know. So Elizabeth's been with the department nineteen years, nineteen years. She did work in our HR section, but now she is actually running our motor pool. And some of you may or may not know, but the state last year get away with state motor pools, we've not had cars, state cars for employees to drive. So each agency was charged with creating its own motor pool. So we did through a contract with the Enterprise Rent A Card. And in many ways, it's actually been a lot more popular because we're getting, yeah, really nice cars through Enterprise. It's at a cost savings to us. But that means that we have to do all that stuff you have to do at an airport counter to check cars in and out to our employees who might be traveling on business. And so we moved Ms. Fisher over and she does that and manages the fleet for us. And it's been, as I said, the cars have been very popular, but also the friendly service they get has been extremely important. And so she was nominated to be our employee of the quarter. And so I want to give you this. And we were in kind of a hurry downstairs, so Ms. West was gracious and said, ask Ms. Fisher to come to the meeting. Did we get a good picture, Charles?
I hope so, yes, sir.
Okay. Great. Right. Thank you. And congratulate.
All right, Dr. Mackey. First item?
I think we have, I've lost my screen now. My apologies.
Resolution to a free educator preparation program at Alabama A&amp;M.
Alabama A&amp;M. So we have some folks here. They're getting used to seeing Dr. Anderson here, so.
Good morning. She's working.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you again for allowing me to come to you and to represent these two institutions today. Once again, these institutions have demonstrated that they are having a commitment to preparing quality educators to go out and become the teachers of record for our girls and boys in our schools. When we visited Alabama A&amp;M, we learned that they are making a host of different changes. One of the things that's so unique about these businesses is that we see such difference at institutions. Although our two institutions today are geographically similar to their location in the state, they are very far apart in what they're doing. So I'm starting with A&amp;M. And by the way, if you'll bring a chair, if you mind, I'm going to bring this one up as well, since that's going to be the next. Is that okay?
Absolutely.
So what I want to tell you about the business is that we did these two very timely times, and it was very interesting to see these two institutions. With Alabama A&amp;M, one of the things that we look at with some of our institutions is that they have to work and be more creative with preparing candidates for praxis. So Alabama A&amp;M has wholeheartedly embraced 240 tutoring, as well as looked at a number of things such as workshops, preparing the candidates, looking at when the candidates are taking the test, looking at how they can go back and revise course syllabi to make sure that those candidates are prepared for the praxis. And so you see a lot of discourse when we were there with the candidates as well, in terms of how they can make sure they have adequate content knowledge and they are prepared to go out and be those teachers. Absolutely great visit, and they are doing wonderful things. But before I turn it over to Dr. Davenport for A&amp;M, I'd like to go to UAH for a minute. And this is what I mean when I say different. The student population that they bring in at UAH is a little different. So in terms of the preparation on the front end to get them to prepare for the praxis, they don't have to quite do as much. But let me tell you, there's another challenge that's there. Because of their location and many of the individuals that come in are actually going into engineering or going to the space center, they have science courses that can come in, those math courses. We're looking at the code now for that four by twelve. And they come in, they might start at calculus two. And so where do you go from calculus two? Calculus three, differential equations. And so their elementary education majors with their four by twelve, they're giving some very high order math. And so, you know, we're having conversations with them, having conversations with Dr. Anderson and the Literacy Act. It's informing us and helping us make decisions in terms of how do we get that best prepared teacher to go out and teach those skills that are critical at those grade levels. The faculty at UAH are also very invested and they're working with one another so they can see, how do we look at these curriculum changes to do what we need to do? So I thank you for the opportunity here in the role I'm in with my team to go out and see these things at the institutions, to authentically engage with them. But without further ado, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Davenport for Alabama A&amp;M, and then after your question period, to Dr. Quig for UAH. Thank you so much.
Hello, everyone. Glad to be here today and to talk about Alabama A&amp;M's Educated Preparation Program. We were really excited when the State Department came in to visit us. It was a very delightful visit. They talked with our subject manager, content faculty, they spoke with the dean, the director of assessment, our candidates in the program for my alternative program and our undergrad program. And so everybody had an opportunity to share how we do continuous improvement at Alabama A&amp;M. So it was a real good visit.
Good morning. It's nice to be with you. Do you want me to go or do you want to hear the questions?
But it depends on if you like that question first.
I think we'll probably have some questions from the board. Typically, we like to know, what is your enrollment this time in your?
Our enrollment at this time is approximately three hundred and about forty-eight students.
Are they primarily early ed or?
About a hundred and seventy-eight are elementary education, and all others are spread across the board as secondary education.
And you said you had a good visit with Dr. Hampton and our team, is that correct?
Yes, we talked a lot about our quality assurance system for program improvement, and we discussed all the sections and processes of the components of K with that.
Okay. And did you discuss the literacy act and the requirements of the literacy act and what the legislature and the board, what the expectations are for higher ed?
Yes, and we talked about our progress that we've made at A&amp;M with our, with the Barksdale report.
Yes, ma'am.
And with meeting all of the requirements. And at this time, we meet all the requirements that have been provided to us of those, whatever those entities or whatever they were, we met all of them.
Great. That's all the question I have, gives me.
One of the things we're emphasizing, we go to each institution, although they have received their progress update from the recommendation with Barksdale, there's more to come. So each institution knows their standards will be adopted and they will have to go back and realign programs with those standards to ensure that that has been met, as well as we're encouraging each institution to send representatives to our conferences throughout the state that are centered around this.
I will say, since I represent both these universities, they're very diverse, they complement each other so well in our communities. And as a former superintendent and dealing with the superintendents in District Four, which is Lime, Sun, Madison, Jack, and the Cat County, we're receiving so many quality teachers, the praxis graduation rate is very high. And these two ladies are instrumental in that. I have many friends that are professors and work in that institution. Many of our relatives and children go to these schools. And A&amp;M has made fantastic strides. And despite the emphasis on engineering, I have a daughter that graduated from A&amp;M at UAH, they're still very high quality, understanding every level of students. They're just not, they're just not all engineers, incidentally. Right?
Say it again.
I will say, I say it all the time.
Board members?
Yes, I do have a question, and it will be for both of you, so y'all can answer together instead of wasting time. But since we discussed about the literacy law, I refuse to call it the act, it's the law, are your textbooks aligned with the science of reading? It's one of those critical mass that with the Barksdale report, when they went to visit, some of the textbooks used at the universities really weren't teaching that science of reading, you know, sort of, I call it the high quality gold standard of all. So is that one of the issues? And I guess I should ask you, is that one of those questions you ask each and every time you go to our visitation? And ladies, I want you to answer as well.
Well, before they begin, we actually don't have to ask that question when we go for one reason. They have to submit a revision. And one of the things that each institution was required to do was submit the revised textbook, as well as their syllabi, and the alignment through the course objectives, as well as the field experiences that they're doing. When we looked at that, out of all the institutions that we have in Alabama, all of them either had exemplary or acceptable textbooks according to the NCT Key Review of Textbooks that was provided. So those textbooks that were previously unacceptable, institutions made that transition and adopted acceptable textbook. What we find is that several of them found one textbook to read throughout, like one example is the Source Book. Many of them went to the Source Book, I believe A&amp;M is one. I don't remember UAH had the Source Book, can't remember the textbook, but I know A&amp;M has the Source Book. And they have it as their main textbook, but then they adopted additional ancillary textbooks that focus on things such as helping ELLs or looking at assessment when it comes to literacy. And those books also were found exemplary or acceptable on NCT Q's list. So that work had been done prior to several of the visits. And when we go, we talk to those literacy professionals as well about the impact that these changes have made in terms of candidate understanding of literacy and what that means for them in terms of placement, because many of them are focusing on placing their candidates more in P through three environments, where literacy has been emphasized more in the public schools, because four through six hasn't quite made the turn that many of the K through three, P through three environments have made.
We're getting there.
Yes, we are getting there. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So I guess she answered that question.
I was just going to say, on the NCT Q, Alabama A&amp;M scored an eight plus. So that means that we are on target with our textbooks.
Yeah, and I would like to just also give a nod to Amy Jones that has worked with us through the higher ed collaboration. And that's been important to help and sustain the faculty. I'm confident our faculty were equipped and doing the wonderful things. It hasn't been a huge sea change for them, but they've engaged in things like the literacy conference that North Alabama, University of North Alabama hosted and presented there. And then Amy has come to our campus and met several times with our faculty. And then we, in anticipation of the new literacy standards, have already mapped the courses to those new standards that we anticipate would be improved next month. So they're actively engaged, and it's a part of what we do.
Perfect, thank you.
And Dr. Jones meets regularly with the EPPs. They meet virtually, and she shares the data from K through six, so that they can look at the progression of how their candidates are performing in the schools and maybe what shifts they need to make in terms of literacy as well.
Excellent. That's great. Other questions?
I was going to say, I know from the pre-service side, we're getting that this morning, but also in reference to placement, I just wanted Dr. Davenport to share with the partnerships you all have in the community to try to ensure that students get jobs after graduation. Yes, we have what we call a school partnership day. And when we have those school partnerships, they be inviting over sixty-eight school districts to come in and spend a day with us. And they kind of, at the first of the day is us doing a lot of celebrations, and we recognize teachers of the year from those who we have a MOU with. And then after that, we split up by programs. And when we split up by programs, the specialists of those programs and those faculty meet with those school partners, and also private organizations in the city. And we talk to them about teacher shortages and things that we need to do at Alabama A&amp;M to make those improvements and also to recruit teachers into our program. Thank you.
Your students are in very high demand.
Yes, yes, we both get a lot of. I know you were talking about it today, the toll costs that we're receiving now.
Right. Them securing jobs is not an issue. The issue is trying to hang on to them and let them get through their programs.
Exactly.
And I often, and the faculty there as well, say to the students, as you're out there and your field experience and your internship, you're on the job interviewing every day. And so securing a job is not the problem. We have an advisory council that includes our partner, superintendents, central office staff, principals. And often there's quite a banter where they're jockeying over who wants which students. And they're like, Bev, help? And I'm like, I, I'm out. These students get to choose where to teach. But many of ours do stay in North Alabama. It also, though, is transient because we have a strong military presence. And so a lot of our students move with spouses as they go. But they are highly sought after and become strong leaders. And we share the same partner school districts, we're both in Huntsville. So routinely meeting with the superintendents, going to state of the schools, doing advisories, so that we are attuned to what the needs are in the districts.
And what I, I'm sorry, one last thing on that point to close out. What I really wanted to show is, we know that they're sought after, but you're proactive to ensure that they're going to have a job. And that means you're going beyond.
And then my question follows up on hers. When you, maybe when they find bumps in the road, and maybe they might be thinking about leaving the profession, are you hearing what it is that makes them think, maybe this is not the right place for me? And I'm not talking about an individual school, but I mean as educators. Are you finding out what can we do to keep our teachers in the teaching profession?
I don't hear that when they're in the program. I hear that after they've finished.
But do you put your ear to the ground about afterwards? So we can, we need to fix that problem.
Informally, anecdotally, you know, as you continue to mentor those beginning educators. A lot of it is they're overwhelmed with paperwork, and they really want to be able to focus on student learning and instruction and building that relationship in the classroom. And so a lot of it's just, you know, that learning curve, the paperwork. What drove them in the passion to become an educator is to build that relationship with the student and to have that impactful teaching. And so that seems to be the thing. We're here from alums.
You've heard that one.
And Dr. Zid, but we're hearing it a lot on the road as we go from each institution, and we're going to prepare a report at the end that we can share with administration, and then if it's allowed, we'll share definitely beyond. But there are several things that candidates say that they would like more support in. And one of the things, trying to be responsive to that, we're doing the conference this year to try to respond to some of those things that these candidates have asked, that they would like to see more of. And so we'll be doing that conference June third through seventh. And our institutions overwhelmingly have come through and registered in support of the conference. And that will have opportunities for them to practice with the assessments, the praxis foundations of reading, get help with the KPA meeting, have a day of collaboration to discuss everything from special education, numeracy act, literacy act, mentoring, so forth, and talk more about certification things. So we're going to do a really big conference. And it happens to be in the state with the two, in the city with the two institutions we have today.
Well, funny how.
And we also know, part of their response, their function is to try to keep these teachers from being taken over. We're in a full employment area. We're a plus employment area. And we're, education doesn't have a priority in recruiting teachers. I mean, the government, all the people that move in offer more money, more opportunities, and we, they're active in helping to understand the commitment they made and to stay with. The school systems in our area know that we're not competing with just each other. We're competing with industry, with high paying, high demand, high criteria jobs. And these people are trying to help us keep those people.
I have the heart of a servant question as well. Since you brought that up, and yes, that's the same thing, and I was nodding my head when she asked. Except it's not paperwork. Fine.
It's computer work.
Yes, computer work is. So I used to hear when I was first elected some years ago, and it was, but actually was paperwork then. Now it's, I think, probably doubled or tripled, and it's actually on the computer. And I just, I have the same concerns. But the other thing that I keep hearing is they wish they had more experience, more help with classroom management, which is an age-old concern. And it doesn't matter whether it's high school or kindergarten or elementary school, middle school, it doesn't matter, and it seems to be an issue. And I just wondered if that's something that you have addressed or continue, I'm sure you continue to address, and I'm sure you already have tried to address it. But that, that's the other part with the, when are we going to stop having to do more tests, more assessments, more, well, you know, they call it paperwork still, understandably. But yes, but that, I assume that you do have classes that are required for each area in the area of classroom management.
Yes, we have a classroom management course that is required. But in each of the courses, as they go through the methods courses, they go out to the students, and they have to teach those lessons. And we ask the teachers to allow them to practice their management strategies and theories that they learn in class. And so they have those opportunities to work with one student, a small group of students, and a whole group of students, so that they can practice. But as you said, they still come back and tell us, classroom management is one of the things that they wish they had more, more support with. But it's not their own class, but they're doing internship, so it's kind of hard to manage for ten days or twenty consecutive days when you're doing the student teaching. So they get the real thing when they go out and get their own classes. But classroom management still ranks in the top five for classroom teachers.
UAH? Sorry, Dr. Quig, would you like to respond?
Yeah, I would just say, I mean, classroom management is one of the top three concerns nationally for novice teachers. And so I think Dr. Davenport hit on it. Our students, from the moment they're admitted to the program in the very first semester, they are in schools every semester as they progress through the junior year and the senior year, to have a continuum up to that internship. But as was alluded to, they're in a classroom with that master teacher who's already established the rhythm, the routines, the procedures. And so that's a little bit of a challenge for them, I think, when they transition into they are the teacher in the classroom. One of the things we've done is a program we call Early Start. And so our students are able to begin the school year with the teacher of record before even the university courses begin. And so they're with that teacher, starting with the professional development, setting up the classroom, understanding how they prepare. So at least they have that, and that's not hidden from them, so that when they become a teacher, they've experienced those first days of school. We found especially in the spring, if they haven't seen that, it looks easy, because the teachers establish the rhythm and the procedures and the routines and the expectations. But to see what that looks like on day one, and what has to happen for that to work, that's been a program that our students have common consistently on. Their early start was pivotal in understanding how all that flows and functions by the time they get to internship.
And we do the same thing at Alabama A&amp;M. They go out the first day of school.
Good idea.
We partner a lot.
We appreciate so much you all making the trip here. We're on a tight turnaround, Dr. Chestnut wanted to make one comment, and, but I wanted to go ahead and say thank you so much for being with us today. Thank you.
I just want to commend the teacher ed programs across the state for your willingness to work collaboratively with the teacher ed, with teacher certification, and all of the demands that have been put on you. And I'm sitting here thinking, as a previous teacher education dean, you know, this is a major step. I can see the progress in what's taking place in Alabama. And I just want to commend you. Oftentimes, we always point out the negative, but I want to just commend the universities across the state and commend the teacher ed department here at the State Department. We can see how we're coming together and the gaps are closing. And, you know, initially, when people come from the state, people are resistant about the visits, but I can tell that you all are welcoming the support. And it's more of support, true support, rather than monitoring. And I like that transition. I can remember the checklist of, oh, do I have this, do I have that? But I see a true collaboration, and I think it's going to have a major impact with the overall performance, not only at the university level, but with our students. So I just wanted to thank you.
Thank you. It's nice to have certain people on speed dial.
Yes.
To have on too, because it truly is a collaborative thing. Many times going, what do we need to do about this, or what's your insight? So we feel that support in the visits. We're excited to have them on campus, but really to showcase and let them have that opportunity to interact with our candidates and our faculty. I think it helps our faculty and staff and students have a better appreciation and understanding of that.
Thanks for coming. Good luck. Running a life six-five. I don't even die.
Yeah. At least you'll see. Bye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item three, Dr. Mackey. And board members, we're on a tight turnaround. We're going to have a hard break at eleven oh five to go up for performance. We have students in the building, and we do not want to keep them or make them wait for us, so we'll commit forward with item three.
Be glad to. So item three, and then following it, item four, are the new textbook committees. So if you want to open that attachment, you'll see that per the law, what we're doing, we're appointing a textbook committee for science and a textbook committee for some career tech fields. And there is one from each board member's district. There are four state at large, of course, those also obviously come from board districts, and then two from institutions of higher education. The only thing that's a little bit of an outlier is on the arcs one, so I'm kind of jumping from three to four, you will see that both the people from institutions of higher ed are from the same institution. And it's just, it's just getting more and more difficult to get people to serve on textbook and courses study committees. I mean, it's getting really, really difficult to get people. And so, and especially the ones that don't have a vested interest in K-12. So we have to get higher ed folks, and they have to come in. Remember, this is not one-time meeting. They meet monthly, it's a lot of meetings. They have to review books. So there are, they actually get boxes and boxes of books. I mean, I've known them not to be able to put their own car in their garage for half a year because they have to store the books. So it's just hard to get people to do it, that we're able to even pull together fourteen is pretty remarkable. So, but that is the only thing I wanted to point out, that two from University of South Alabama, but they're two good ones, they're very committed to do it. So those would be on the agenda to vote on next month. They would start to work immediately after that then, with the intention to bring you a report on science and this career tech textbooks, probably right at the end of the year, probably would come to you in December. So any questions about that?
Do you have questions about this or comments?
Are we going to listen to the board for one?
Go ahead, Dr. Chestnut, did you have something you wanted to add?
I guess I'm wondering, what could we do to provide an incentive to get people to serve on these various committees? Could they be compensated in any way for their service?
We have, I'll have to get, I'll get Tina to do some research on that. One of them, and I get it confused, there's of course the textbook committee and then the course of study committee. One of them, the law does not allow them to be paid. We of course pay per deal, but they do in many cases, because they meet in the summers, and then some of them have to get childcare. So that's something we've talked about before, but I can't tell you which one's which, so.
And I know others, there are some other states that actually have it set up to pay either an outside organization or the people that they select to assist. And I think you get probably a better process.
Right. And you do, I mean, there's some states that pay up to a thousand dollars a day to teachers to come in. And there are also some states that do it where they make, they do like two weeks in the summer, and they just come in and do the whole thing at one time rather than the monthly piece. But if you do that, you really do have to pay people because it's, otherwise, it's really hard for people to do that.
Can we look and see how many states are providing compensation for this service such as this? That's a big ask.
It is.
I think part of the problem is the conflict with other laws within the state. First of all, that primary law that prohibits the payment, but also the ethics laws, and of course, they're changing some of them. The revision, though, is more along the lines of civil versus criminal. So from the standpoint of paying people, I think, you know, you get into little areas where the company starts sponsoring dinners or receptions, and so. And so it gives you a, I don't know, it's just, it's...
I can see both sides.
Yeah, I'd be really careful, very careful.
We won't do anything without a discussion, but we'll do a little research.
I was working with Dr. McCarty, trying to find someone from business and industry to serve on the STEM council. And what we ran into, it wasn't the money, it was the time.
House of Representatives, they take off.
So we have the performance group today, I'll remind you, is we've moved to dance. So for the month of April, we have a dance team from Paul Bryant High School in Tuscaloosa. And then, is it okay, Mrs. West, we just go to lunch from there? And then, I don't, so that will probably not be over one last week. They're a little shorter than the musical programs, but probably till 11:30. And if y'all want to do some pictures and things, so I would say I would come back to 1:15 or later.
1:15?
1:15? Oh, no, I mean, I mean, 12:15. What if we get 12:30?
12:30 is good.
12:30.
12:30, everybody, is that good for everybody?
12:30.
All right, 12:30 it is. Thank you.
All right, it is 12:30 and we're gonna move, Dr. Mackey had to take a call. We are gonna move on to the resolution recognizing Alabama's grow our own initiative. Dr. Bol, I believe, is going to speak about this for, to us, with us? Is that right?
Yeah, I can, CTE perspective, can we come up here?
Yes, sir.
So, we are, you know, recently rewrote the course of study.
Yes, sir.
Which you guys approved, included education training with a mindset and a focus on being able to have programs build themselves out in the CTE world to allow for grow your own programs to increase.
Yes.
We currently work with AEA on a grant for future teachers of Alabama. I believe that's the resolution. We're recognizing some folks coming in, so that's what that's all about. And then we're also in some preliminary discussions with a group called Educators Rising that may be a really strong partner for us in the future. That offers support and resources and other programming kind of elements that will help with grow your own. But this particular resolution is focused on recognizing the future teachers of America chapters in Alabama and the winners of the, they have like contests and those winners will be recognized.
Okay, perfect. Board members, do you have questions about the resolution?
It's a longstanding program. We, you know, do it annually.
How many chapters?
I'm not 100% sure. I'm sorry, I don't have that info.
That's okay, that's okay. Dr. Payne, you may know this, do you know how large that AEA grant is this time with that grant?
I know. The line item's $100,000.
Is it? Okay.
And then we increased the original grant from, in the beginning, I think it was like $500 a chapter, but we worked with them to get that increased to, I believe, $1,500 a chapter that they get, that the teacher gets and runs the chapter. And it's not a CTSO, but it is still like, it's like a club sitting in the school that allows really any teacher. It doesn't have to be a CTE teacher. It could be a second grade teacher. It could be a high school English teacher. Anyone can start the chapter and the resources that AEA provides helps support the growth in, in, in that program related to FTA.
Okay.
Laura Bailey and Kayla Candy in my section help facilitate the grant process and get the grant out and then they receive the applications and we work through that.
I was asking, does Dr. Fossett know the amount of the grant? Do you know?
The last line item that I saw was $250,000.
What did I say? Did I say 100? It's 250, I'm sorry. It is 250, you're right, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. I just wanted to...
Because it has, it has been for a while.
Right.
Yeah.
Please provide us with a list of GATs.
Yes. We can get that.
So, are these for brand new chapters or for current chapters?
It can be new or existing. And many of them repeat, you know, year after year.
And is that money used up completely too?
Not typically, no.
It seems like this would be such a great...
Yeah, and that was one of the reasons we increased the amount on that grant from what it was to more, more, a larger amount of money made it more appealing for people to start new chapters. So, we did see an increase. Now, you know, I can't tell you for sure if the entire amount was used up for this year or not, but in the years past, it's not been.
And is it for grades nine through 12, two through 12? Do you remember?
I am pretty sure, like I said, any teacher can run it. And so, in theory, I think it can, I think most of the chapters are like seven through 12.
Seven through 12.
Yeah.
In the most recent proposed budget, it's $250,000 for the line item with a $1,000 cap for each grant.
$1,000.
Okay. Board members, any other questions about this one?
Nope.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Mackey, we have gotten down to the resolution number six honoring Hoover High School. This is where we are now.
Okay. So, Hoover High School is our only school this year to apply for the National Green Ribbon School. Remember, Green Ribbon School is awarded to schools for environmental, environmental programs. They do a lot of different things. Last year, we had two. I know Gump Shores was one. I can't remember the other. We've, we've had several in Talladega County. We also have colleges that can apply for Green Ribbon Schools, but we are the keeper of Green Ribbon for both K-12 and the colleges. But this year, only Hoover High School applied. And so, so they'll be recognized at next month's meeting for as being a Green Ribbon School, and they should be here. And then we'll see, sometimes the schools want to set something up at the school too, a little ceremony. I know last year, Gump Shores did one. A few years ago, I think, Ms. Manning, I think you were there with me at Monford or someplace, Lincoln, one of the schools in Talladega County did one. So, that's that. These next three, we move, we're gonna move pretty quick now. I'm glad I got that. Yeah. So, Teacher of the Year is always a matter. We will have, be planning, you know, the night before, we'll do something. It's probably gonna be in a different place this year. We're working on that right now. I know that the, we, we enjoyed being in that auditorium at the Museum of Fine Arts, but the reception area has gotten too small for us. And so, we're, we're looking for a better place and we are really close. I don't know if I can publicly announce, but we think we're gonna be in a really, really nice space. That's gonna be free here in town. So, that'll be the night before. So, what you have are three resolutions. One for the Teacher of the Year, which is obviously blank. One for the alternate Teacher of the Year, also blank. The one that's not blank is the, the resolution commending the 16 finalists. Because we know who the 16 finalists are, we just don't have the, the announced Teacher of the Year. So, and while we're on that, so unrelated to that, you know, the Teacher of the Year thing goes on for a long time. So, our Teacher of the Year, our new Teacher of the Year, we will announce in May. Our current Teacher of the Year, he and I are gonna be together with the, the other Teachers of the Year in Washington in a couple of weeks. So, that's gonna be really nice of being at, we'll have a state dinner for all the Teachers of the Year. It's the first time it's ever been done. So, we're excited about that. And I know he's excited about it, but, and, and it'll be all happening in May, but one is our current Teacher of the Year, and then one will be our new Teacher of the Year will be taken, taken this place.
Can you share about the national Teacher of the Year?
The national Teacher of the Year, some of you know that I've had the opportunity to serve on the selection committee. It's really, it's a fascinating journey. But it's from Tennessee, Missy Testament. She's from East Tennessee, and she grew up in East Tennessee. She, she talks kind of like I do. She's just a great person.
Isn't that right?
Yeah, she's, she went back to her hometown. She, she, after college, she went back home to teach and just a fine person. You're, you're gonna be, we're gonna try to get her to Alabama. She's really remarkable. The, it's pretty interesting. So, the one before, so the current Teacher, the national Teacher of the Year is from Oklahoma. The one before that was from Ohio, but his grandparents lived in Linden, Alabama. So, we had a connection to him. And he came back to Alabama pretty often and knew, we knew a lot of the same people at crossroads because he spent his summers here as a boy. And then now we've got one in Tennessee. So, we're, we're pretty happy about that.
Rogersville, Tennessee?
Rogersville, that's right.
That's where she's from. And does she teach Spanish?
She teaches ESL.
ESL.
And it's an interesting change of career. So, she taught, she taught English, I guess just English language arts for years. And the town she's in has had an influx of migrants. A lot of them from the Middle East, I think. And so, she felt a passion, in her words, a calling to, and she went back to school to become an ESL teacher. And so, she's been doing ESL for, for a couple of years now. And really, as you can imagine, with a teacher of that quality, not just teaching them English, but helping them learn how to assimilate to, from being, you know, across the waters to come to East Tennessee is a big assimilation.
Yeah.
Working with them and their parents about all that. So, I really do hope we can get her to come down here too. And the, the other finalists, by the way, were from Georgia, Alaska, and New Jersey. So, it was interesting that we had two. Two of our neighbors were the finalists. So, that's, anyway, that's all coming up in May. It'll be a big Teacher of the Year celebration for the month. We...
And I am serving on that committee.
Please do, yeah.
I am serving on that committee. So, I'm excited to dig down to those applications.
Have y'all, you've not finished yet, right?
We have not. We need, I think it's the 16th. I think it's next Friday.
And thanks for doing that, because it's a lot of work.
It is. So, is Banner School?
Where is Banner School? Yeah, Dr. Mackey?
You know, recently we wrote the course of study.
Yes, sir.
Which you guys approved and included education training with a mindset and a focus on being able to have programs build themselves out in the CTE world to allow for grow your own programs to increase.
Yes.
Uh, we currently work with AEA on a grant for future teachers of Alabama. And I believe that's the resolution. We're recognizing some folks coming in, so that's what that's all about. And then we're also in some preliminary discussions with a group called Educators Rising that may be a really strong partner for us in the future, um, that offers support and resources and other programming kind of elements that will help with grow your own. But this particular resolution is focused on recognizing the future teachers of America chapters in Alabama and winners of the, they have like contests and those winners will be recognized.
Okay, perfect. Board members, do you have questions about our resolution?
It's a longstanding program.
Right.
We do it annually.
How many chapters?
I'm not a hundred percent sure. I'm sorry, I don't have that info.
That's okay, that's okay. Dr. Payne, you may know this, do you know how large that AEA grant is this time with that grant?
The line item is a hundred thousand dollars.
Is it? Okay.
And then we increased the original grant from in the beginning, I think it was like five hundred dollars a chapter, but we worked with them to get that increased to, I believe, fifteen hundred dollars a chapter that they get, that the teacher gives and runs the chapter. And it's not a CTSO, but it is still like, it's like a club sitting in the school that allows really any teacher. It doesn't have to be a CTE teacher. It could be a second grade teacher. It could be a high school English teacher. Anyone can start the chapter and the resources that AEA provides, um, helps support the growth of in, in, uh, in that program related to FTA.
Okay.
Laura Bailey and, um, Kayla Candy in my section helped facilitate the grant process and get the grant out and then they receive the applications and we worked through that.
I was asking, does Dr. Faust know the amount of the grant?
The last line item that I saw was two hundred fifty thousand.
What did I say? Did I say a hundred? It's two fifty, I'm sorry. It is two fifty. You're right, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to.
Cause it has, it has been for a while.
Right.
Yeah.
Please provide us with a list of the GPTAs.
Yes. We can get that.
Okay.
So are these for brand new chapters or for current chapters?
It can be new or existing. And many of them repeat, you know, year after year.
And is that money used up completely too?
Not typically, no.
It seems like this would be such a great.
Yeah, and that was one of the reasons we increased the amount on that grant from what it was to a more, more, a larger amount of money. Made it more appealing for people to start new chapters. So we did see an increase. And that, you know, I can't tell you for sure if the entire amount was used up for this year or not, but in the years past, it's not there.
And is it for grades nine through twelve, two, twelve? Do you remember?
I am pretty sure, like I said, any teacher can run it. And so in theory, I think it can, I think most of the chapters are like seven through twelve.
Yeah.
In the most recent proposed budget, it's two hundred and fifty thousand for the line item with a thousand dollar cap for each grant.
Thousand dollars.
Okay. Board members, any other questions about this one?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Mc, we had gotten down to the resolution number six honoring Hoover High School.
Okay.
This is where we are now.
Okay. Um, so Hoover High School is our only school this year to apply for the National Green Ribbon School. Remember, Green Ribbon School is awarded to schools for environmental, um, environmental programs. They do a lot of different things. Last year, we had two. I know Gulf Shores was one. I can't remember the other. We've, we've had several in Talladega County. We also have colleges that can apply for Green Ribbon Schools, but we are the keeper of Green Ribbon for both K-12 and the colleges. But this year, only Hoover High School applied. And so, so they'll be recognized, um, at next month's meeting for as being a Green Ribbon School and they should be here. And then we'll see, sometimes the schools want to set something up at the school too, a little ceremony. I know last year Gulf Shores did one, um, a few years ago, I think. Ms. Manning, I think you were there with me at Monford or someplace. Lincoln, one of the schools in Talladega County did one. So, um, so that's that. Um, these next three, we move, we're gonna move pretty quick now. I'm glad I got that.
Yeah.
Um, so Teacher of the Year is always in matter. We will have, uh, be planning, you know, the night before, we'll do something. It's probably gonna be in a different place this year. We're working on that right now. I know that the, we, we enjoyed being in that auditorium at the Museum of Fine Arts, but the reception area has gotten too small for us. And so we're, we're looking for a better place and we are really close. I don't know if I can publicly announce, but we think we're gonna be in a really, really nice space. That's gonna be free, um, here in town. So that'll be the night before. So what you have are three resolutions. One for the Teacher of the Year, which is obviously blank. One for the alternate Teacher of the Year, also blank. The one that's not blank is the, the resolution commending the sixteen finalists. Cause we know who the sixteen finalists are. We just don't have the, the announced Teacher of the Year. So, and while we're on that, so unrelated to that, you know, the Teacher of the Year thing goes on for a long time. So our Teacher of the Year, our new Teacher of the Year, we will announce in May. Our current Teacher of the Year, uh, he and I are gonna be together with the, the other Teachers of the Year in Washington in a couple of weeks. So that's gonna be really nice to be at. Um, we'll have a state dinner for all the Teachers of the Year. It's the first time it's ever been done. So we're excited about that. And I know he's excited about it, but, and, and it'll be all happening in May, but one is our current Teacher of the Year and then one will be our new Teacher of the Year will be taken.
Can you share about the national Teacher of the Year?
The national Teacher of the Year, uh, some of you know that I would have had the opportunity to serve on the selection committee. It's really, it's fascinating journey. Um, but it's from Tennessee, Missy Testament. She's from East Tennessee and she grew up in East Tennessee. Um, she, um, she talks kinda like I do. Um, she's just a great person. Yeah, she's, she went back to her hometown. She, she, after college, she went back home to teach and just a fine person. You're, you're gonna be, we're gonna try to get her to Alabama. Um, she's really remarkable. The, um, it's pretty interesting. So the one before, so the current teacher, the national Teacher of the Year is from Oklahoma. The one before that was from Ohio, but his grandparents lived in Linden, Alabama. So we had a connection to him. And he came back to Alabama pretty often and knew, we knew a lot of the same people at crossroads because he spent his summers here as a boy. And then now we've got one in Tennessee. So we're, we're pretty happy about that.
Rogersville, Tennessee?
Rogersville, that's right.
Where she's from. And does she teach Spanish?
She teaches ESL.
ESL.
And it's an interesting, um, change of career. So she taught, uh, she taught English, I guess just English language arts for years. And the town she's in has had an influx of migrants, a lot of them from the Middle East, I think. And so she felt a passion, in her words, a calling to, and she went back to school to become an ESL teacher. And so she's been doing ESL for, for a couple of years now. And really, as you can imagine, with a teacher of that quality, not just teaching them English, but helping them learn how to assimilate to, from being, you know, across the waters to come to East Tennessee is a big assimilation and working with them and their parents about all that. So I really do hope we can get her to come down here too. And, um, the, the other finalists, by the way, were from Georgia, Alaska, and New Jersey. So it was interesting that we had two, two of our neighbors were the finalists. So that's, anyway, that's all coming up in May. It'll be a big Teacher of the Year celebration for the month. Um, we.
And I am serving on that committee.
Please do, yeah.
I am serving on that committee. So I'm excited to dig down to those applications.
Have y'all, you've not finished yet, right?
We have not. We need, I think it's the sixteenth. I think it's next Friday.
And thanks for doing that, cause it's a lot of work.
It is. So is Banner School.
When is Banner School, yeah, and Dr. Manning?
The Banner School is the first Monday in May. It will be in Pratt, all right?
Same place.
Yep, May sixth. Eleven. I always go with that. That's wonderful. I asked him to move us to change the seating pattern. I have to call him again.
Lay that with you and Vic. Lay that with you.
I know, but see, so we're always seated from one to eight. So we're way over in the back corner.
Well, they need to seat them according to height. And, and I think that.
I'll go along with that, cause I'd still be there.
All right, let's move on to item number ten.
So ten, ten, um, I asked Mr. Stevens, Dr. Shields to come up. So we've got some good news to announce here and we've been, other folks are wanting to have it. We've got the media with us today, so I sure hope they, they carry this story. Um, we're very excited about the graduation rate where we are in, in CCR. I'm not gonna steal their thunder, except to remind you that we took a dip. So we were doing really, really well on both of these. We took a COVID dip and we're, we've been really, you know, doing the work, but also crossing our fingers about what we would see. So just turn it over to you.
Yes, we do have some good news and I know Sean's gonna, um, talk about some of the accolades we certainly want to share with so much of the regional staff that have been in the field supporting schools, really making sure that we're looking at the secondary data. I know a number of our offices have done a lot of professional learning on, we do a lot around looking at the early learning data, but we really wanna make sure that we're having conversations with our middle and high schools to make sure that we are held accountable for not only reporting, but proper monitoring that data. Um, and I'll tell you, Sean, I'll let you take.
Please go ahead.
Just so you know, the four-year cohort is based on a number of students who entered grade nine for the first time, just for some clarity. And so each cohort is identified by that base year and the graduation year. So the base year is the actual year a student is a first time ninth grader. Um, the graduation year is the year the student is expected to graduate within that four-year cohort. So we, what, we wanted to do a gigantic up symbol to really celebrate, um, the twenty-two four-year cohort graduation rate to the twenty-three four-year cohort graduation rate. We've gone from eighty-one point twenty-one percent to ninety percent, which is, as you see, a one point eight three percent change. We're very excited about that. I know Sean has got some notes that we've, we've put a lot of structures in place. I think our College Career Readiness Grants, if you wanna talk a moment about that?
Just excited about, um, the opportunities that our College Career Readiness Grants will provide our districts as they continue to expand opportunities for students to explore, you know, what they may wanna do after, uh, their lives after high school. But really, I'm proud of the work that our, our team has done, but most importantly, the, the work that our school districts have done to ensure that all students have an opportunity to graduate. And we have all of those supports around them that, um, we want every student in Alabama to graduate and become a successful citizen. And so you can see by just the increase, one point eight three may not sound like a lot to some, but it's tremendous to go from eighty-eight point twenty-one to ninety point zero four. And that's attributed not only to the efforts of our districts and the opportunities, but again, solid, um, record keeping, ensuring that, you know, no one's doing it up on students and that we're following them all the way through their opportunities to walk across the stage on graduation day. So we're really, really proud to see that increase. Um, and that's also a lot, because of a lot of work from a lot of people. Really proud of our schools.
Just to provide some context too, one of the things we started last year and continue this year is that all regional staff across, across our state, we meet once a month for what we call our regional collaborative. So that's all of our NTSS or ESL or OSI-SAP, ARI, AMSTI, ACM, Technology in Motion, Regional In-service Centers, cause there's all these wonderful people that we have in place serving the schools. And while we are in the schools trying to really be a blessing, we know it's important that we come offsite to calibrate a bit, to make sure that we're not being redundant, but also providing accountability among ourselves to say, okay, well, there's a gap at this school. So when you go on Tuesday, um, we just looked at their graduation data. So can we have conversations about this or that? Um, how are we monitoring the data? We've stolen a lot from our elementary counterparts who do a wonderful job at tracking their data and making sure that there are people at the schools that are assigned to that work. Um, unfortunately, we have found in the past that sometimes, um, the graduation rate may not truly reflect what actually happened because of record keeping. And so we, we have really taken ownership to say, how can we provide support and scaffolding? Um, a lot of these trainings are now posted on our Office of Student Learning YouTube channel. So while we have a lot of live opportunities, we make sure that there is, um, time for them to have on-demand training with these as well. Um, talking about the College Career Readiness, we'll just kinda keep going. You know, I think we'll pick up those CCR grants again. Just once again for clarity, so CCR is determined based on the percentage of students enrolled in that four-year cohort who meet at least one of these indicators below. So this includes our ACT subtest benchmark scores, our ACT work keys, silver or higher, advanced placement qualifying score, which is a three or more, uh, international bachelor art exam qualifying score, an approved college or post-secondary credit in high school, dual enrollment, um, and approved industry credential, which we have had a wonderful relationship with Dr. Hall and his team to really assimilate the work that we're doing. Military enlistment, uh, per technical education completer, and that was added, remember, July twenty-two. And also in July twenty-twenty-two, um, we added the in-school apprenticeship program. So if a student meets one of those, then we're able to say the student has received ACCR. So once again, you see we had some really positive growth. Um, in twenty-twenty-two, we were at seventy-nine point zero seven percent and now we are up to eighty-four point twenty, which is a, a positive movement of five point thirteen percent. Um, I will also say the College Career Readiness, I'm gonna revisit that grants. I wish we had more opportunity to share with you the innovative ways our schools have been able to use this funding. And I wanna be really clear, when we're talking about CCR, College Career Readiness, this is not just for high schools. We are having opportunities, K-12, we're really trying to build a pipeline with our students on how they, um, can pursue all sorts of industry credentials. Um, so we're looking at workforce development data to see what are those jobs that are available in your area? What are those that are up and coming? We had some funny conversations when we looked to see what are those, what are those jobs that are gonna be available in your area? And some of them, I've had to look them up. Um, you know, these are not the typical, I wanna be a policeman or a teacher. And so we, we know a lot of our communities want to keep their brightest students. So we're looking to see what are those opportunities we can have in career to, to matriculate those students to, to those, to those positions.
So if I'm in, if I'm a, uh, student in a low-performing, um, s- school, and how do I find out and what are the steps for me to get a grant?
For the CCR grant?
So, well, is that a school?
That's really Sean's way.
Is it, is it, is it the counselor? I mean, uh, what, how are we getting these grants disseminated, I guess is my, where I'm at.
Yes, but the College Career Readiness Grants were part of the, um, supplemental appropriation from the legislature that go directly to districts. And so we were able to prioritize, um, those based on, uh, those schools had a fifteen-point gap between their graduation rate and their College Career Readiness rate. And so many of those schools, uh, were able to receive close to four hundred thousand dollars each school. I mean, there's some amazing things going on in our schools and they're really innovative, not just, you know, the normal, everyday thing that we would think of. And we'd love to come back in a later time and share some of the great things we've learned from them, how they're using those grants to support, uh, opportunities for students. Uh, those grants have been able to, uh, to fund students going on college tours, business and industry tours, have provided, um, test prep for students and preparing the teachers in the buildings to help students with test prep, uh, paid for scholarships for dual enrollment, all kinds of.
Childcare, Twilight School for our, many of our students who are needing to work during the day for various reasons, how we giving them opportunities in the evening to recover credits or take courses. Um, it is, now, one of the things, I'm, I'm glad you mentioned that, is we, we felt that it was important that we look at the data as we prioritize who received these grants. So if there was a disproportionate number between the graduation rate and their College Career Readiness rate, we knew that this was an area that there was a gap. So we provided, we did a number of state webinars and we, of course, saved this so that our folks would have it as on-demand. But what we tried to do is think of what are the things we're already seeing in our schools? Where, where our, our schools are trying to be gap standards to make sure that we are raising not just our College Career Readiness rate, but we're, we're having more opportunities than we've ever had in our schools. So we shared with them a number of, here's things to think about. Um, have you considered, just as kind of, um, thought partners to them in this work? And we said, take these ideas and do what good educators do and do what works for your community. And so I, I do wanna, um, lift up so many of the grants that, um, I know our whole team spent a lot of time going through those grants, um, that we, we really hope to be able to lift up some of these now that they've had one year into it and share some of these successes.
And that every single district who applied at least received, um, fifty thousand dollars at a minimum, but depending on the situation and the, you know, uh, the difference between their College Career Readiness rate and their graduation rate, they may have qualified for more because that was one of the priorities.
So if I wanted to pull, if I wanted to ask you for the data for a, a district that was awarded a grant, you could tell me what they're doing and how many students they're impacting? Like, do you drill?
There was a projection, so that was part of the grant package. So, um, we, we had, we know exactly how they plan to spend that funding. Of course, we're nimble and know many times you begin a project and you adjust, which we want them to be able to do. But in terms of those hard numbers, um, that will be in part of the reporting process.
Dr. Shields, can we get the core graduation rate by school system?
Can we get the what?
The graduation, the core graduation rate by school system. Additionally, can we get the grants by school system?
Absolutely. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
So there has to be a difference, five percent?
We were able to prioritize the funding for any of those schools who had that difference, um, between their graduation rate and their College Career Readiness rate. But every district who applied did receive, um, at least a minimum of fifty thousand, so.
So we'll get the report, what every system got, you told them that, like?
Yes, sir.
And then the cohort rate by school system?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
We're excited to hear much more about what they actually ended up doing, planning, providing. And so we're actually having a pre-conference session at Mega that'll highlight, um, that is one of the components and have, uh, an opportunity for them to share with each other. Cause sometimes you don't know what's possible until you hear from someone else and something. Everything from, um, you know, classroom instructional materials, simulators, there's all kinds of opportunities that I think that as, the more they hear from others, they wanna replicate those things and think completely outside of the box.
Mega's a good place to do that.
Well, I think members of our legislature have been looking at, you know, providing a pathway for younger people to work that are currently not able to go to work, that want to work. So certainly this is a coincide with what they're, I think, hoping to achieve and opening that door for students, so.
We wanted to lift one other thing too. One of the, um, areas with the College Career Readiness Grants that was a, a focus, um, districts, some districts chose because we know how much dual enrollment has exploded, but also the need for instructors to be able to teach those courses. Part of that grant could be used to actually send their teachers back for additional, um, college coursework to meet that requirement. Um, send their teachers for AP, pre-AP, a wide variety of things that might not have been possible from other funding streams. So we're really excited to find out what the end result is.
There's a great repertoire. I mean, you know, this was supposed to be about innovation and thinking about things you've wanted to do, you know, for quite a while. And, and I, I certainly wanna lift up the schools that participated because that, that's what we saw. And we, we stole some really good ideas and we hope to be able, and that was part of our pitch to them, is, you know, you apply for this grant and if awarded, and we see really great movement, we, we hope to be able to replicate that in part or in whole and share it with other districts.
That's great.
If I could take just a minute to brag on everybody sitting at this table here, because this is a, like, this is a textbook course in how policy should be developed. The CCR grants came from a discussion of board members around this table, that if we're gonna require all of our students to have CCR to graduate, we need to support our schools to get them. So let's go ask the legislature for money on it. But let's not say everybody has to, everybody gets the same amount and everybody has to do the same thing with it. Let's allow these folks, department folks, to work with the districts to develop what works best at that school. And let's target more money to the places that have the most need. And the legislature fully funded the request last year. By the way, it's back in this year's budget, um, for a second year. And then our folks laid out an application that, so that everybody didn't just get money to spend however they wanted, it's guided. But it's also, the, the bumper rails are wide enough that every school can do, as they've said, what they need. I mean, it, it really is, of all the things we do, this is the one I'm most proud of because the, the policy came from the board, the legislature funded it, our staff have made it work. And we're seeing the number, we're already seeing the numbers going up. So, so one point eight percent growth in graduation, but five point three or five point one three in CCR, and that will continue to close that gap. Also continue to raise the graduation rate and close the gap at the same time. So I feel really good about it. It is, by the way, in the budget again. Um, and so we're already working on what those grants can look like for the, for the upcoming year. And a big, big, I mean, I appreciate the board for that and I appreciate the two of these, these two people on our staff and their other folks they've worked with to make this happen too. It's been a good team effort.
Did you have a question?
I did not call on you aside. What is, what is one of the most impressive projects you've seen in schools?
Great question.
I'm thinking of some of those, and we love how our students, they get a grant. And we tell them, we want, keep us in the loop. You know, we, yes, we're gonna be getting the, um, formal reports. So some have taken that charge very seriously and we get pictures all the time. I think in Gaston City, um, that sent us some pictures of some work they were doing where their students were building, um, buildings and they had had childcare and, um, the whole community was involved. And it was just amazing to see so many partners involved and really, um, investing in these kids who wanna pursue construction and carpentry. And this was in the evening hours. Um, I think the ones that had the, the kids in them are the ones that, that, um, touched my heart the most. Those that are saying, okay, cause what, when you see this, I mean, you're, you're thinking of College Career Readiness. There's so much more in that. I'm thinking of Dr. Kay Warfield, the work we're doing with attendants. We know that when children have their hands in the work and that, that is a great opportunity to, one, engage your students and have them actually attend school. So some of the things we're doing to encourage attendance, um, to make sure, you talked about simulations, that we're using all of these super, I mean, innovative, we're trying to stay on top of ourselves technologies. Um, I'm thinking of some of the things we have with, um, science, where there's these simulated labs where students are actually able to do things in four D. Um, it's just, it's just a what, the Twilight Schools, I think, um, because of being a high school teacher, those, you know, I know my students, um, who had either situations at home that prevented them from coming to school full day. They had to work to support their families. And I love how some of our schools are saying, you know what, we can provide support to them in the evening. So they call them several things, but Twilight School, I think is probably the most common, um, for our students who have missed a lot of school. We are having conversations about, if you remember being in school yourselves, you know, sometimes if you had an unexcused absence, absence, you got a what that day? Zero. You got zeros. Well, many of our students who have unexcused absences, it is not, it is not a child issue. It is a situation that goes way beyond that. It might be a, a family issue. There could be a lot of, so we're having conversations with our schools around that about maybe we need to rethink, how can we, if our students have missed days of school, how can we bring them back in and let them miss, catch up with the learning? And not be so, um, bound to antiquated policies of just giving zero when a student's absent.
I know I'll get it wrong and I don't wanna do this one project, uh, in injustice, but I will tell you that our districts were so thoughtful in how that they were using their grant money to support all students, focusing on E.L. students and even our special education students. I, I, one district in particular, um, in their grant application, were ensuring that their special ed students had the same opportunities to experience the same things and just needed some additional funding to, to make some adjustments to areas and programs and things that might not have had that same funding stream before. And I'll, I'll certainly share it with you. I just don't wanna do the injustice and not do them, uh, the, the great work they've done, but even being thoughtful that it's for all students, not just what some might think as the hot flowers. And I was really proud to see that they were really focused on everyone and what they were able and their potential could be, not just what we sometimes assign to them.
I think you definitely put a little fire in my belly that we need to do some sort of. I think you definitely put a little fire in my belly that we need to do some sort of maybe one pager of some of the really innovative things that we've seen and share that. Because there have been just, they're all so different, but they're all so wonderful, you know, in a way that's very specific to their schools.
Shields, are you all seeing any impact in the workforce centers? We have a new indicator and it's attracting students that, in areas that would not have had impact on.
We, we are, we are hopeful and as like I said, with Dr. Hall and his, and his office, we meet often because there's so much crossover with the work that he's doing and the work that we are doing. We certainly saw that lifted up in the applications that they are partnering with their workforce development and with their workforce partners. But I think we're, as we're starting to see communities really build robust pipelines for that, I'm hoping to be.
We see the legislation and the workforce centers modifying our, our requirements for graduation and recognizing those components specific to, to the workforce. And I know we're waiting to see what the legislature does to us or for us.
As you, as you build this out, I realize we're, we're just getting, you know, in there right now. But I do think it would be helpful for our next session, legislative session, to have a catalog of all these innovative, you know, that we can put in their hands so that they can see in their district where they've been elected to serve that, that these grants are being used for this purpose and then how many students that's serving. I think so often they get phone calls from people that don't always, you know, share the full picture of, of what we're able to do and provide in our public school buildings. And I think if they have the opportunity to really see how this money was being used, they may feel much more confident to, to talk with their constituents.
I think that's an excellent idea.
We'd be more than happy to bring back those to you.
Now, the CCR grants been put in the actual 2025 budget or are they still in the supplemental?
Had to look and see, so last year it was split. We got some in the regular budget, some in the supplemental. I think it's way to begin this year.
Primarily, I think it's in supplemental, but yeah.
We're in a state, we're in an era where we'll, because of the, the cap now we'll place, we'll probably have supplemental budgets forever. Supplemental budget becomes part of the budget.
I realize that, but you just have to be really careful.
Yeah. Well, these two are headed to Birmingham now to meet with some big dogs from Advanced Placement, I understand, is that right? Or y'all are the big dogs, Advanced Placement just meeting you.
Alabama's being recognized just for our work in Advanced Placement, especially with regard to pre-calculus and the rollout of that course. And so the highs levels of leadership from the college board are actually in Birmingham right now, kind of looking over that mock reading that's occurring. Where our teachers have come together with their students, mock exams, and so they're, they're highlighting the great work and very interested in what Alabama's doing. So we're going to let.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you to me, so I want to update a couple of things. I want to jump right off of that and talk a little bit about the budget. And then I've got a, a nice ARI update too for you. But so as I mentioned, I'm so proud of this program because it, it really is, this is the way good policy gets developed around the table. Another one of those is, we began talking about, as you know, we had a small pilot program, go back and revisit too much, around middle grade reading. So what we've been calling struggling, for struggling readers beyond grade three. You picked up on that and you want it, we need it, we need money for this from the legislature. We need to, again, focus on the schools that have the greatest need. So that was in your budget request last fall. Now, it has been a struggle because it's, it's, it was out of the budget for several months. But if you saw, I think I sent you a note, it is in the House budget as it came out of committee for five million dollars for a program for struggling readers beyond grade three. That is all it says. Because I told them, I said, we don't want any language that says, do this or do that or a formula. It needs to come to us and then we're, we will divide it up based on need. Now, five million dollars, I'll tell you, a lot of schools won't get a penny of this. This is going to focus on the stu, the schools that have, well, basically, don't hold me to exactly this, but what we're looking at, one, after May 17th, I think is the day we've notified districts, they'll get, they'll know who on the third grade reading test, you know, which students are in danger of being held back. So after that, we'll look at the schools that have the most students who are moving to fourth grade, but they are just above the cut score. We will look at the one, the good cause exemptions, then those who get promoted for good cause exemption. So we know they're below grade level, but they have an IEP, they have a portfolio assessment or something, so they're moving. But we know that there are struggling readers still. And then we will look at other proficiency rates to see kind of where they are with, with fifth and sixth grade. We're going to really focus on fourth, fifth and sixth grade. The people who have been in this work for a long time will remember the name Ari Powell. So there was a program to do middle grade reading years ago, but it was never really funded. And one of the things that, that kind of got ARI upside down was that a lot of schools tried to use the, stretch the ARI funding to also cover middle school, within that left the K three without an F. So we've been very clear with legislative leadership that we want new money focused on middle grade reading. Now, there's even, Dr. Chestnut has worked with some of the senators and they are, they asked us to put together, well, what would it take to actually do a full rollout that's kind of a new ARI for middle school? And so we've put a package together on that. I'm going to tell you, I don't think that'll get all the way through this year, but I'm glad to hear legislators coming back to us and saying, what, what would it take? We've had so much success in K three, what would it take if we kind of rolled that out in middle school? Y'all know the big problem in middle school, intermediate grades, I don't, you know, it's hard, but really we're talking about four through eight, is that even if they're reading on grade level, the text gets so much more difficult when they start reading in the content area. And I've told y'all before as an old science teacher, there are a lot, I got a lot of students who could read, but they read novels, they read fiction, but when you put them in a chemistry book, they really struggle to read because it's a different kind of reading. So that's what we're thinking about, what, how do we support these struggling readers so that they're able to do that contextual reading? So anyway, I'm glad we've got five million dollars in the budget. We asked for 22 million, we got five. We, there is some talk about it going up some, so I don't know that, that we won't. And we've got this alternate proposal out there that's for significantly more money than that. I don't know if I should say how much, but it's north of 50 million. And that would give, that would basically supports for every school, so it's a much, much broader picture. We'll know by the middle of the summer where the grants are going. So we'll, and of course, it's got to still pass the House and pass the Senate, but I've had many conversations and I feel very, very certain that we're going to get at least the five million across the finish line. So we are, we are planning as if that, that's going to happen. So I feel good about that. Again, that's another program, just like the CCR grants that came from the board table. Then we took it to the legislature, we had to sell it, but now we're, we're, we're hopefully going to reap some rewards on that too. That was money that's in the supplemental budget, which means that we can make it available before October 1st. And that's one of the reasons that I specifically asked that they put it supplemental because that's money then that we can get to the districts at the start of the school year, rather than having to wait till the second quarter to get the money. Okay, other things I wanted to mention to you.
Can I ask you one thing about that?
Uh huh, sure.
How is the five million dollars included?
Sorry.
You mentioned the line item, the five million dollar line item. Is that a separate line item or is it included in the ARI increase?
No, it's a separate line item for struggling readers beyond grade three. Separate line item, good question, thank you. Literacy and math, the money is in the budget for our summer reading and math camps. Remember this, away summer of 25, we have the money for summer of 24. We feel pretty good about that. I've been asked a lot of questions recently though, including this morning before this meeting, about districts that are now basically telling the reading interventionists, so not reading coaches, interventionists work directly with children, that they are doing away with those positions. And I think I may have mentioned this last month, that this is an issue because we had, I don't know how many exactly, but I'm going to tell you a few hundred probably interventionist positions that were created with ESER funds. So these are people working directly with students who are struggling. Those funds are going away, most of those districts are either reducing the number of interventionists or in some cases, they are telling their interventionists, we're not going to have intervention programs anymore and giving them the option. Most of these are senior teachers, so they're tenured, so they have the option to go back to the classroom. And we've talked about this some, but I'm just, you know, I've predicted, I think publicly, it's already been in the press, that we're going to have a record number of retirements this year. And we do see that coming because of two things. One is that this will be people now who, the, the, the change in the retirement formula that allow people to stay longer and continue to get raises up to 35 years. So this is the third year. So a lot of folks now recalculate their retirement. Some of them had moved to these interventionist jobs and now they've been told that your interventionist job's going to go away. We want to keep you, but you're going to go back to the classroom as a teacher. And some of them have decided, I'm, I'm just going to retire. Not all of them will, but some of them will. So we're going to lose some people through attrition. Obviously, one of the things that worries me and worries everybody I'm looking at is that you're losing your, your most senior, trained, qualified teachers who have been working a long time and built a lot of skills. They're interventionists and now they're, they're leaving. So one of the things that we're hoping, I've already started talking with some superintendents locally about this individuals, I mean, is how do we get some of those people to come back part-time? Like, I've talked to two that they are, they're interventionists now, they are going to retire, but both have said they are interested in coming back part-time. And then how do we maybe make, get some silver lining out of this cloud and convince some of them to go to other schools, to schools where we really need interventionists? So, so hopefully there will be some silver lining in getting people to move to these other schools because we're focusing more money into the schools that have the greatest needs. But I, I just, I mentioned that I've got a list of notes here that I won't go on too long. But I want to remind people that even though we're, we're, the legislature is helping us keep things like our summer reading and math camps, there are state programs, now there are state programs as in the funds go through us to the locals. But that does not mean that there will be money to replace all the lost federal funds. Remember, what we've asked the legislature to do is to replace the funds that were flowing through the state, which is 10% of all the federal money. The other 90% is gone. And there will be some money, I mean, local, there will be some increases that, in state funds that locals can use. There will be some Title I money they can use, some of them have local funds. But there's no way that the total loss of ESER funds can be absorbed with state and local funds. We simply are going to see some cutbacks. And I, the thing is, the, the investments are working, so you hate to see retraction, but, but there's going to be some.
I'm just curious, can interventionists, can they participate, if they leave, can they participate in the mentoring program? Or do those teachers that participate as mentors, do they have to be a full-time classroom teacher?
I'm not sure about that, the teacher mentor program, I'll have to ask Ms. Harris to check on that. Can a retired teacher come back and be like a mentor for new teachers? Could they be in the mentoring program?
Because I know we've had, we've had discussions in the past.
I'm sorry.
No, we've had discussions in the past that we've had a shortage of mentors. And if we've got some senior level folks leaving, could we possibly glean some of those folks to come in over onto the mentoring side?
Yes, the, the, yes, the funding will support them taking mentor up to five individuals once they retire.
Oh, wow. Okay.
This is a good question. And it draws me to my next point, which is assistant principals. So one of the things that we talked about was in your requests and the legislature has semi-funded is additional assistant principals. I say semi-funded because there's about 20 million dollars in for additional assistant principals. The request was that any school, the, the total request was that any school that had 250 students, we'd get a full-time assistant principal. So you'd have a full-time principal and an assistant principal. It's not going to quite be that. What we're going to see is an increase of a half of an assistant principal for elementary schools, starting at 300 students, not 250. And then a full-time assistant principal for middle and high schools, starting at 300, not 250. The only reason they chose 300 over 250 is because there's, there's only so much money and how do you stretch the money? And so if, the, the, the way to balance it was to make a reduction in elementary and to go to 300 instead of 250. We are still going, we'll be back in August, when we start talking about next year's budget, which is just around the corner. We'll be back trying to push for the 250 and for rounding out the other half of elementary. But that's, there's a lot of traction. I would say that's one of the most popular items over there for, as far as what they're hearing from back home, from their principals and teachers. And then a lot of it's just dealing with, with discipline. With the principals just being so pulled in every direction, they cannot get to everything. And so we need to, we need another administrator in the building. Which takes me to the mentoring program. So as you know, starting this year for all new principals, they have to have a mentor. And retired principals can be principal mentors too, we're working on that right now. In fact, a memo's going out very, very soon to ask districts to predict to us how many new principals they will have so we can figure out how many mentors have to be hired. And as you may know, class is actually, we're sub-leading to class to do the mentoring program, but they don't know how many mentors to hire. The good thing is, talking to Dr. Vic Wilson, they have lots of retired principals interested in the mentoring program. And so he's just got to figure out how many of them they need and then they have to obviously go through the training so they can be ready. But we think we'll have plenty of mentors. There's also a limit to how many they can mentor, I think it's also five. And we are, the plan is that we would only use retired principals to be mentors so that you're not pulling a principal out there in the school to mentor a new principal and they can be in the building more often. So that's another thing that y'all started and it's moving on very fast. And then I want to mention the principal supplement. So principals can start getting supplements, you remember that was in last year, there was a principal act. So starting this coming year, principals will be able to qualify for up to a $10,000 supplement and assistant principals for five. We are, the way the law is written, Dr. Payne may have to correct me on this, but the way the law is written, they get the supplement after completing the year. So essentially, they're going to be, that's not going to be a monthly draw. They're going to have to finish what they are supposed to do and then we will reimburse the district at the end of the year, the end of the school year. We're still kind of working through what that looks like because it's going to be a really fast turnaround, basically, in the summer of 25. Remember, there's no money in this year's budget, so we're talking about next year's budget. So in the summer of 25, that we're, the district's going to have to notify us who completed the work. Then we have to turn around, there's, you know, it's not just easy to issue a state check. And we have to verify that and then do a draw from, from the treasurer's office to the district. And then the district will have to pay the person before the end of the fiscal year, which is September. And for principals who change, like if they change to a different school, school district during the summer, then they're, they're going to have to do some work because basically a district may have to transfer money to another district. So it'll be a little complication, that Dr. Payne and the accountants are working on that. That Dr. Payne and the accountants are working on that, but, but it will come through. We were looking at quarterly draws, but looking at the way the law is written, that's not, not really allowing it.
Dr. Mackey, having served on the middle school at the state and the federal, well, national, not federal, but, um, middle school study committees and looking at so many of the problems and I appreciate all the work, especially in those areas. What are we doing for high schools? Because they don't just drop out at middle school. Are we strictly, I know we just mentioned AP courses and the success there. What is being done in that area? Besides workforce, I know, which is not bad, but, but that's all I'm hearing about now.
Would they qual- so the high school principals aren't qualified for all this too? The PD, the, the stipends, uh, the whole gamut. And then the CCR grants, most of that is going to high schools. Now, they can apply for middle school, as I mentioned, but most of it is going to high schools. High schools are doing game busters work because they are doing the work. I, I don't have any doubt that we're gonna, we're gonna maintain the 90% graduation rate and hit the CCR rate of 90-plus percent by the time that becomes in the graduating class of 26, we're two years away, where they have to have it to graduate. And I really think that the track we're on, we won't drop. I mean, if you looked at it today, what would happen is our graduation rate would drop from 90% to whatever that number was, 85%. But the way they're working, I think we'll close the gap in two years and they will actually continue to have the grad rate at 90% and everybody will graduate with a, some sort of CCR. It's oddly enough, we actually have some high schools whose CCR rate is higher than their grad rate. Ms. Martin had to explain that to me, but basically, they have people outside, who are graduating outside the cohort and they are, so they have more graduates than the cohort and all of them have a CCR. We do have some that are close to 100%, so it, it's dual.
And also, Dr. Mackey, if I may add, uh, with your approval, when we move the graduation team to our instructional support team, that's helping us be more intentional. If you remember when Dr. Marilyn Lewis was here, grad rate and CCR actually lived in support circumstances. So now that we have it as a part of our instructional team, it's a part of our monitoring before they graduate. So they're doing, um, I'm not gonna use the word audit, but progress monitoring throughout the year to say, we only have X percent, what are you doing, here's some suggestions. So it's not an after fact thing, it's throughout the year. So it's part of the instructional support that they're providing throughout the year. You heard Dr. Shears mention the attendance. So they're able to go in there and look at the attendance of that upcoming cohort to see what is going on with them. Do we need to get with those schools and/or districts to see where we are? So it's more intentional. And that, uh, meeting with Dr. Mackey and even approving that transfer, transfer of that work to our instructional team. So we're more intentional that way. So we're looking to see more results, seeing more kids that are ready. Because, you know, we have markers, we're looking, we're seeing what's going on and providing that individualized support to those schools and districts. That's how we were able to do those CCR grants, when we started looking at those gaps. Hold up, you only have these many kids. Do you need some help? We encourage you. We did minutes matters, we did memos, you were asking, how was that communication? So we were constantly pushing it out. Thanks to Anna and that minute we matter, she was able to just keep pushing it out, nugging those districts. You haven't submitted, here it comes again. So we were able to keep that going. So some of those, really, it got their attention. So we were more intentional.
Trying to do, y'all know the OB, trying to be more support and less just compliance. And it's working, it's really working well. I wanna mention, um, so Reading Initiative, I just wanna mention this. You know, one of the things we, we are doing with Reading Initiative is, is working with Parker on an outside evaluation. And we got some really good data from them recently on, um, surveying reading coaches. And so I wanted to, to update you on that. So read, we, they surveyed for us all the reading coaches in the state, completely anonymous, so we can see, you know, what do they think? So it's interesting, I just picked out a few of the, the main things. First is this, the thing that every, well, not every, the overall reading coaches said to do their job, what do they need? What's the most important thing? Is to have a principal who acts as an instructional leader, preserves their time for coaching specific duties, has participated in letters training and supports the efforts that are critical to coaching success. A principal that supports their coach. And that was over 90% said the number one key thing for them to get their job done is to have a supportive principal, who is also principal trained in letters, understands what they're doing and supports preserving the coaching time. Okay, so you ask coaches, what is the number one thing the state can do to support you? To tell our coaches to protect our time so that we can coach? So, so that's pretty interesting. We gotta, and I'd mention that, to me, that marries right up with what I was talking about. We're gonna pay principals a $10,000 bonus and we're gonna require them to do an extra week of professional development a year, which is in the law. We got our principals, we gotta focus on making sure they understand instruction and how to support good instruction.
Dr. Mackey, wasn't there somewhere in the law, you know, there's so many laws and bills coming through, that says that the reading coaches cannot be used as disciplinarian?
Absolutely.
So they're in violation of the law.
If they do, they are. And we have only had, we've had a couple, well, actually, those were not in reading. We had a couple of math coaches that it got back to us that they, their principals were telling them, not, you know, I'm gonna use you for something other than a math coach. And of course, you know, that's a difficult position for that coach because they work for that principal. In our case, the fortunate thing was, because we have regional people, they picked up on it and they brought it back. And then, I can tell you the two that I, we dealt with, because I talked directly to some superintendents, those got fixed. Now, I do understand if I'm the reading coach or the math coach, it's hard for me to tell my principal, no, I'm not gonna do this or that. But again, that's why we need our people going in and out of schools to see what's going on. And, and I, and of course, it also shows up in other ways, who's, who's good. Okay, let me say the, two other things here. Over 90% of our local reading specialists say that they are confident, or extremely confident. So they responded confident or extremely confident in their ability to collaborate with their principal and create a coaching plan. So over 90% of them felt like they, their principal was supportive. But again, that was the number one thing they said. What can you do to help? Make sure that does not change. And for the, the 10% who didn't say that, we, again, it's an anonymous survey, but we wanna know, you know, we gotta follow up. We gotta continue to look for those places because they will never have the success we all want if you don't have a strong principal who's doing the work. And then the other one was, um, our, uh, local reading specialists felt that ARI and their regional specialists from the state were supportive of their roles and that was overwhelming. And so I wanted to put that at the end to say a big thank you to Bonnie Short and her team because they, they just. We'll continue to, you know, break that down, but, but we do wanna know what they say, what's going well, but also what they need. So I've already told, Ms. Martin and I have talked about this.
Sorry. No way.
We want, as we build our principal mentoring program for those early grades, we're gonna focus heavily on coaching, how to work with your coach, how to support your coach, and how important it is that that new principal get letters trained himself or herself immediately. Because that's what the survey says.
Will the letters training be what the teachers receive, not the administrative training?
I think it's the administrative training. It's a, it's a little, it's shorter. One of the reasons is because it's, well, we do recognize that, you know, they're having to do the literacy and the math, they're having to do a lot. But also because it more focuses on what you need to do as a principal. It does, one reason it's shorter is it cuts out some of those things about how to teach reading. But it does, but it's actually probably better because it focuses on your role as an instructional leader and what you need to be doing. Now, if you got a teacher who's already, I mean, a principal who's been letters trained as a teacher, it's a hundred times a big grade.
The surveys that went out, and you may have said it and I just missed it. What, what was the response rate? Does it, did he say?
Did not say. We did have a response rate, but I don't remember what it was. We'll get it to you. It was pretty high, I think, oh, my, my.
One of the things that they communicated to us was that it was one of the highest response rates they've ever received.
Okay, right. Great numbers, but only against how many? Did everybody respond? So, and clearly, we weren't gonna get 100%, but, okay. Thank you, congratulations.
So that completes it for me for today. Just remember that something, if you'll kind of mark the night before, the May Board meeting will give you some information about that.
I have a quick, I have a quick question before we go. Board passed a resolution in February regarding cell phone policy. Have we had any response to that resolution? Do we, are we asking superintendents? Is maybe SSAA or, uh, School Board Association addressing that? I would like to.
Look, staff, we've had very few questions from superintendents. At the time, so we'd had a few questions about what's, so remember, what we told them was you gotta, you need to have, legislature requires them to have a policy. We want you to strongly consider that policy limiting cell phone to schools. I don't know that there have been any changes. We'll follow up with Jane Harold Williams. Let me see if she's, where she's been. I suspect that, that'll be a topic of conversation at the summer conferences for SSAA.
Is that a problem that you just ask them to submit the, I mean, will we need to pass another resolution asking or telling them that they have to submit their plans? Because we've done that over the years. And even though not everyone, I don't think we have the, have you submitted your plan, please? In so many cases, unless they have to do with state or federal funds. But on the other hand, if they get into that habit, it may actually be helpful to them and they know that they have to have or should have some type of plan. But I think from a legal standpoint, um, it's still a local option and there's no mandate that they have to tell us anything from what I've looked at. I don't know.
So like, I have to have a policy?
They still have to have a policy, but can they submit it to us so we have it on file? I mean, is there anything wrong with that?
Do you change it?
Right. Yes, not per school, it'd be per district.
Yeah, so if they have a plan, they're gonna have it already, so they can just send it on.
And I think that's probably what the deal is. Most school systems that I talked to had a policy.
This gave them the opportunity to update that policy and rethink it, yes?
I was just gonna say the same thing. While I was in discussions when we were drafting this, I was talking with AASB and some of the other organizations and that most, all of them had a policy, actually, all of them, I think, had a policy. Whether or not, you know, how restrictive it was, was, you know, the disparity between some. I think it did give them an opportunity to kind of go back over their policies to see if there was need to, okay, and make any changes.
Could we ask Sally and, and, and just to maybe see if the local boards are having those conversations? Going, it makes sense that going into the fall school year, if they were going to restrict cell phones, that they would start the year with a clean policy and that the board voted unanimously based on data that restricting service in the classroom was going to improve discipline and learning. And if they haven't, those local boards need to be having these discussions now for next year. Can we do that?
Yes, absolutely.
But without a mandate, they probably are so busy doing other things, it's not a mandate to even submit to us, which may, it would be interesting to know what the different plans are.
Yeah, we'll get with Sally and Jane on where they are.
Anybody else have anything? Where are you, John?
135.